Are you ready? All right. I'm gonna call our regular meeting for order at 5:02. And we'll start with roll call, Laurlee.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lesong.
Here.
Nancy Rumpel.
Here.
Thank you, Laurlee. And Nancy, please leave us in the pledge. It's right over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. For eleven minutes, the agenda would be our first item. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda for today's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed for today, March 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first from Stu, and second from Dawn. And Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lesong.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we are ready for our school presentation. We raced through all of them, so we're ready.
Madam President and Members of the Board, welcome to Ponderosa. Tonight, we are going to share with you how we are a global learning school. And you can see that we have four pillars that we integrate throughout our curriculum on a daily basis here at Ponderosa. And they are investigate the world, recognize perspectives, communicate ideas, and take action. And so I have some wonderful students here today that are going to share how they've worked through one of these pillars in their classrooms this year. So we're gonna start by having our kinder-- three kindergartners come on up here. And so this is Arthur, Ellie, and Daxton. Arthur, you're first.
The mint and cheese tradition at Ponderosa Elementary. Um, kindergarten bring-- kindergarteners bring in hats, scarves, gloves, and men to donate to the loved ones house of the needs of these services.
This project supports our local community by helping those in need stay warm during the cold months.
Thank you, guys.
And next up is our first grade student Sasha.
This year, first grade participated in the Take Action Project. We wrote notes to people in nursing homes. We told them we love them and they are the best. We wrote the notes to them because they don't have a lot of family to support them. And we wanted to send positive messages to spread kindness to the local community.
Thank you, Sasha. And next up, we have a fourth grader, Liliana.
Fourth-- fourth graders Take Action Project is Project France, which is a national organization that provides handmade blankets to children who are eight and the United States were seriously ill traumatized for otherwise a need. For many years, Ponderosa's fourth graders donate all the fabric, cut and tie the ends, and give the blankets to call our chapter every year at Christmas. This project fits into our Take Action pillar as we use our ideas to help the lucky.
Thank you.
And next up is fifth-- our fifth grade student Colleen is gonna tell you a little bit about what they did in Eco Week this year.
Every year, fifth grade attends Eco Week for three days up at the Stacy Mountain campus. The purpose of Eco Week is to learn about various ecosystems and about the Rocky Mountain Territory in a remote alpine setting. Although we got very little sleep, the accommodation was very high quality. The food was absolutely amazing and the staff was great, too. I got the opportunity to take an 11-mile hike that gave us the opportunity to see extraordinary wildlife, various types of trees and plants. The coolest part was when we got to the top and there was a cliff where we sat and ate our lunch and looked over the entire campus. It was so humid that my brown paper lunch bag ripped apart. My lunch spilled out, which was kinda sad. The six-mile hike was more geared toward history where we got to see the remnants of a World War II plane crash. Crossing the river and, uh, excuse me, walking for the trees and crossing the river led us into National Territory where we learned the rules of how they differ from outside of the park to inside of the park. Eco Week falls into the global pillar of Take Action because we use microscopes to identify macroinvertebrates and how they indicate water quality.
Thank you, Colleen. And our last person to share about their Take Action project is Dallas, and she's representing our Student Council. She's the president of Student Council.
The global pillar that Student Council plans around is Take Action because we strive to lead the school in making choices that improve conditions. In the fall, we held a school-wide food drive that made it a competition between grade levels. Students brought in cans of-- in food that we donated to homeless shelters. It gave us a lot of pride to be able to help out. We also did a dog food drive and collected food, treats, and toys to donate to animal shelters that were helping to help out our furry friends. Our last big project this year was the Terra Cycle Box where we collected broken and unusable items to give a company for recycling purposes. Our hope was through all these three projects that Ponderosa students would learn the importance of using corporate actions to improve conditions.
Thank you, Dan. So now we're gonna move on to communicate ideas, and we have two of our second graders who are gonna come up and share how they were communicating in their classrooms this year. Theo.
This year's second grade has focused on the global pillar of communicating ideas. Every morning, we start the day with a morning meeting circle. This-- this gives us the opportunity to share how we are feeling that day as well as making connections with our classmates. This helps us work together to solve problems and bring stern ideas around different topics.
Thank you.
Through our character strong curriculum, we reflect on ways to engage in the world to make it a better place. During SEL time, we also focus on setting and sharing goals as well as ways to its growth concept to persevere. Both of our classrooms used guiding questions to create class agreements to follow throughout the year. Everything that Theo and I talked about allows us to communicate our ideas effectively with different audiences.
Thank you, Amy. And next, we're gonna move on to investigate the world. And we have Julia from third grade to share what they've done in their classrooms.
The global pillar that third grade has focused on this year is investigate the world. We spent some time studying crayfish. We learned that they have different adaptations to help them survive. We also learned about their habitat and we had the opportunity to pick them up if we chose to do so. We read-- we read deep down in other places to learn about how people live in hot, cold, and remote environments. We then compared it to our own lifestyle. We rotated with second grade to study different winter holidays around the world. We learned about the differences in Mexico, Iceland, China, Italy, and Sweden, Bulgaria. Last, we had the opportunity during the district's Read-A-Loud Day to hear the well-known, very hungry caterpillar in Japanese. The guest reader was from Guam and lived and taught in Japan.
And our last pillar is recognizing-- recognizing perspectives. And Alice is gonna share what they've worked on in their classroom.
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Caskey. I'm a fourth grader. My class studied a unit on Colorado Native American tribes. I want to share some of those facts I learned with you about the Utes and the Pioneers. Fact number one. Each spring, the Utes have a special dance that represents the awakening of the bear. The Utes respected the bear. The Pioneers hunted the bear for the fur, and they would hunt the bear if they got attacked. Fact number two. The Utes have a unique relationship with the environment and mother nature. For example, the Utes use every bit of the buffalo, including the bones. On the other hand, the Pioneers only use part of the buffalo, including the fur. As you can see, I use multiple perspectives in this reading. Thank you for listening and hope you have fun learning new facts.
Nice job, guys. Well, thanks for allowing us to share what we do here at Ponderosa. We really appreciate it, and we encourage you guys to get out and see the school and take a look at the bulletin boards and see all the learning here that's happening. So, thank you.
Let me check to see if any of them have questions. Nancy, do you have any questions for?
I love the presentation. I love the-- I forget which grade it was-- that went to the nursing homes. My mom used to work in a nursing home, and I remember how much it meant to them to have kids come through. So I thought that was really, really nice.
Stu?
Another question, but you guys all did an awesome job. Thank you.
I agree. You guys did great. I learned stuff from everyone of you, so thank you.
Nice presentation skills.
Yes.
Very well.
Denise?
Yeah, very well done. Thank you. Yes, I was gonna say, is this part of your speech class as well? Because all of you, I mean, your public speaking skills are just amazing. Everybody doing an amazing job with confidence and, um, guys just did great, so good job. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Mike? Should we do a quick picture with the kids? Well, just a moment, friend. Yes, yes. They did such a nice job. Yeah, just step forward a little bit, let the adults get in the back, okay? Yes, these are-- A full step, how about? There you go. That's true.
All right. Um, down side, there you go. Okay, yep, that's good. All right, on three. There we go. Okay. Okay, on three. One, two, three. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, you guys. You did a great job. Thank you very much. We're gonna start with our, uh, our board meetings. Oh, do you wanna-- No! JIC. Number one is the board meeting schedule.
No, it's JIC.
You've moved it around on me again, okay? Where is the schedule? Is it not doing more? Of three. All right. You'll have to keep me on track because I went from our original plan and thing. All right, Joint Insurance Committee.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board. I'm Dr. Barhart, our Director of Benefits and Risk Management. I'm joined tonight by the two co-chairs of the Joint Insurance Committee, Robert Jones and Andy Stevens, who have the pleasure of, um, working with our JIC as well as the rest of our amazing committee. So our connection to Strive 2025 is human talent because it's a huge part of our recruitment and retention of our high-quality staff and stewardship of resources because we wanna be transparent in how we're using the resources. So our purpose tonight is to provide you with our recommendation for the 2526 school year. As you know, JIC is responsible for recommending a comprehensive health employee health insurance package that allows our employees a choice of plans that's competitive with market. We start our review and evaluation of what is going on in our own plan and in the insurance market in September in preparation for being here today. This renewal is effective July 1st. JIC members understand the importance of maintaining an affordable and comprehensive health benefits package as a key factor in attracting and regaining high-quality employees. This has been a tougher year. CBT has weathered higher cost of claims, which in previous years has-- their lower claims have helped us weather the storm. So in turn, this year, we are helping the trust as a whole weather the storm. After our conversations in JIC, looking at other plan designs, having conversation about what insurance trends are, and lots of painful conversation, I would say, over the last couple of meetings, the recommendation to the board is that we continue to offer our PPO Select, our PPO 5, and the Kaiser DHML 1500 Plan, and maintain that hospital reimbursement plan or the HRP as a secondary plan. Our enrollment in the HRP is still continuing to decline. As if you recall, last year, we made the adjustment to eliminate the 100% participation requirement for our members, so we're seeing a decrease. The reason we don't just rip the Band-Aid off of that plan and make it go away is it would increase our utilization another 3%, which would be a lot to bear in the current market. PPO Select is still holding very strong. It's our most common plan that we introduced three years ago, and it is still very widely favored by our members. We would like to continue to pay the single PPO Select life and dental premiums for full-time employees and the pro-rata share of the PPO Select and dental rate for the part-time employees based on their percentage, which is what our common practice has been for multiple years now. For those staff who are still enrolled on the HRP, we would continue to pay the single HRP life and dental premiums for those members. HRP is seeing a slightly difference this year. We'll be seeing the same increase as the rest of the medical plan. This is the first time that the HRP has ever existed in trust history that is seeing an increase. And part of that is to help weather the storm that we are in the middle of with those costs. We want to continue to apply the PPO Select contribution to employees out-of-pocket premium, that is to either purchase up to the PPO 5 of the Kaiser Plan or to be able to continue to purchase towards that dependent coverage. The next one's a new change. After much conversation throughout the course of the year, we are recommending that we unbundled the medical and the dental plan to allow our employees more flexibility in their enrollment choices. This is in response to the fact that we get lots of phone calls throughout the course of the year of members asking for dental coverage only, and right now, you have to be on medical to participate in the dental. We talk about voice and choice for our kiddos, and it's fair to offer that same opportunity for our staff for their medical premiums. We would wanna continue to pay the full-time dental rate and then that by percentage share, so we're not reducing the benefit. We're just allowing more flexibility for folks to decide what they want for their families. If they don't need dental, they don't need medical, they could choose to enroll through us. I know I personally will put my family on the dental if this is the decision that is made. In addition, we are looking to enhance our vision coverage from what's been called the Vision Plan to the Vision C Plan. This is based on a survey we sent to our vision participants. And the big change in this plan is it would allow for an annual frame benefit for our members. It would be a lower copay instead of a $15 copay for a vision exam. It would go down to a $10 copay. And it would increase some of those limits around contact lenses for our members. So our contact lenses, very well received by, um, by the folks who are using the vision coverage. Almost 90% are in favor of the 30% of the employees that completed the survey. So a very popular choice. So, this is the bad news.
I knew it was coming.
It's coming. Tried to soften it. The net effect of the renewal for the health, life, and dental insurance will result in about a 13% overall annual increase to the district, which comes in at around $2.2 million. Estimated total for the annual district costs for health, life, and dental insurance is $19,587,420 for the 2025-2026 budget year. Ouch, I know.
So, questions? Board members, questions? Let's start with Stu and we'll go around this way.
How much of an increase did you say it was?
It's a 13% increase.
And how much in terms of dollars?
2.2 million.
All right, thank you.
Todd?
Is our benefits package, at least, you know, the part you're talking to, pretty similar to the neighbors?
Yes, and in recent years, our neighbors have increased their deductibles due to their own cost increases.
But most of them are doing like the--
à la carte, if you will. Yep, in fact, we're one of the last districts that has still bundled our dental and our vision, so this would help some of that competitiveness as well.
Thank you.
Alexandra, I know you've been on the committee this year, right?
Yes. I don't have a question. I would just say that, um, you know, even though we're-- we're rates are going up a little bit more now because of being part of the trust. As Dorothy said, in a lot of years, it's helped us. We've been more, and the other members of the trust have helped us. And so, and overall, the trust saves all of us money. In the meetings, we've talked about a lot of-- a lot of districts or other big organizations who are choosing different options for insurance, whether self-insuring or going with, you know, commercial companies or what have you. Their premiums have been going up on more on the range of like 20 to 25%. So even though 13% is a lot and $2 million is a lot, it's substantially less than it would be if we were not part of the trust. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
Denise? Any questions?
So the 13th person, how does that compare with the previous two?
So last year was-- so that's 7%. Thank you. Like 6%.
So, so we've had a trend created a few years before that, and we even had a 0% increase. And we've kind of talked in with our representatives, like a little bit of COVID's coming in. People didn't go see doctors. Bigger things are happening now. And we just have a lot of-- a lot of high expenditures, but not like over like a million-dollar hits, but a lot of like $100,000. And so that, we're just getting like an admirable amount of those. So then, pretty soon, it's like--
We have 34 what they call catastrophic claims that are over $100,000, which is what's driving that whole board's combined with trust-wide utilization in higher-dollar categories. Seeing more stage four, late-stage cancer, those kinds of things, which drive that overall cost.
Thank you.
Any questions? I answered.
Yeah, mine was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This one's back to us again.
Yes, you will see this again at the end of the hall.
Thank you. I see that now. I'm sorry. 5.2 is the New Vision Charter School renewal.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the School Board. I'm actually here on behalf of Dr. Melissa Schneider. And I'm Patty Burton. I'm the Executive Director of Student Support Services, and I'm happy to be here tonight to go through the New Vision Charter School renewal. Several of us were on the team, including Todd and Bill here, who can also answer some questions. But I'm gonna hand it over here in a minute to our very own Marion Hale, who is the Executive Director of New Vision Charter School. The New Vision Charter School renewal process encompasses all of the areas of Strive 2025, including student achievement, inclusive and supportive culture, human talent, and stewardship of resources. Right now, I'm gonna hand it over to Marion so she can provide some history and some great things about her school. Yes, thank you all for having me this evening. For those of you who have not met me yet, my name is Marion Hale. I'm the Executive Director at New Vision Charter School. This is my first year as the Executive Director, but I've actually been at New Vision Charter School for 11 years now. So I've served in the roles of sixth grade English, English Language Arts, Assistant Principal, Principal, and now Executive Director. So it's been really neat to be at every level of the charter school and really experience the growth into where we are now. So we opened in 2006. We are the first and oldest charter school in Thompson School District. We started with 486 students, and now we serve over 1,000 students. So our mission is up there for you. We serve to challenge, encourage, and empower students every day to persevere on their journey to be lifelong learners. So everything that we do in New Vision centers around this vision. We are a core knowledge school, and this-- our curriculum builds a really strong foundation for lifelong learning. So core knowledge is founded on a spiral. So what students learn in kindergarten, they see again in second grade. They see it again in fifth grade, all the way up through that eighth grade year. So it's really good for that foundation, and it's built off of the belief that if you provide students with that background knowledge, that they will be able to really thrive in their literacy and those learning skills. We do offer a comprehensive character education program as well. So we are a character count school. We also use Second Step within our school day. Every day, we talk about our pillars, which are trustworthiness, responsibility, respect, caring, honesty, and being a good citizen. Our curriculum is aligned to state standards. We are upheld to REDACT. We do take the C Mass. We collect data regularly. Our MTSS framework is something that has been recognized by the Colorado League of Charter School, the Charter Institute, and it's really a strength that we take pride in at New Vision. We do operate off of a board, so our Board of Directors is composed of parents and community members. And our goal is to keep open communication with staff, parents, students, and the community. We do host regular board meetings, provide board updates, and we do have a staff committee that does attend those board meetings regularly and presents to the board about the happenings at New Vision Charter School. So as I mentioned, we do have character education in an SEL program. We really do pride ourselves on our strong school culture and climate for every student, staff member, and family so that they feel welcome, respected, and empowered to contribute to our school environment. We do take regular culture and climate surveys. We took one this year in partnership with the University of Colorado Boulder. And just one of the statistics that we kind of caught our eye and we're very proud of is that 78% of our middle school students are involved in a community-based activity. Which, for middle school, that's pretty high, and that was something that we were very proud of because that's kind of what foundations of our charter school are all about. And then you can see staff, we have 93 retention rate-- 93% retention rate for our staff. So a lot of our staff have been there with us for a very long time, and we're very proud of that. It really helps build that rich, strong educational experience for our students. As far as safety expectations go, we work closely with the district on this. We use the Crisis Response Manual. Our standard operating procedure is aligned with Thompson School District, and we work very closely with safety and security to make sure that our school is a safe place for everybody to be at. Special education is another area that we collaborate with Thompson on very heavily. I just had a meeting with our sped coordinator today. Exceptional student services are something that we are under the insured model with TSD for, and so we report regularly. We work in tandem with TSD to make sure that our exceptional students get the services that they need. All right, so it is our recommendation that we have found that the application has been definitely acceptable and even exemplary in many areas. And it's recommended that Thompson School District renew its charter agreement with New Vision Charter School for another five years. Does the Board of Education have any questions?
Let's start over with Dawn. Question.
What's your growth like in the new campus? I know you just got everybody in one place, but I-- do you have the growth skill?
We are capped right now, so we actually have a waitlist of 143 students right now. We did a slow grow when we got into our new campus in order to maintain the culture and climate. And so we actually just got full, the 22-23 school year was when we were finally at capacity.
And it's day 12.
Day 8.
Day 8, okay. Alexandra, question?
I don't believe so.
Denise? Questions?
Where do the majority of your kids go once they leave New Vision? It's kind of an interesting trend that we've been following. It used to be a lot of our students went to Mountain View, but now that the district has really opened up to choice, it's all over. And that's really a cool part of our district is it seems like every high school has something that's special about it. So students can really flow their passions into the high school that they choose to be.
Amy?
No.
Okay. Nancy?
I was just reading through it, and I was at the DAF meeting, so I thought it was really--
Uh, I was just reading through it and I was at the DAF meeting, so I thought it was really, um, it says a lot about your school that there's a hundred and forty-three. I think you said a hundred and forty-three on your waitlist. And then I was looking at the C-MAS scores, which are higher than the district and state, but then I was curious on your demographics for free and reduce and IEP and so forth, how does that compare to like other, like other schools? I know every school's different, but on average, how does it compare?
I don't know about other schools, but I do, so let's see. Uh, so we have our school demographics, we have nineteen percent black, indigenous, people of color. Uh, the district is at thirty-one percent within their, their schools. Um, we have twenty-two free and reduced lunch eligible students percent. Um, the district's at thirty-two percent. We have one percent multilingual learners, and the district is at five percent. And then we have seven percent of students with IEPs, the district's at twelve percent. We have seven percent GT population, and the district is at ten. So close in certain areas and then further in.
But it's probably really, it's probably different at every, it's like whether it's elementary or middle school.
We, we do have some schools in our school district that have, um, a lower free and reduced lunch population percentage as compared, and we have some that are much higher. Um, but yes, in the same format. We work side by side a lot together with Student Support Services, and they are very welcoming and love to, um, ensure that they are providing support for all students that are in the board.
Right, and I'm sure with the IEP students, it's similar to the other elementary schools, that if there's something that you don't have, then they go to another school, just like the other elementary schools.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Stu?
Before I ask my question, a couple of weeks ago, I was at your school for the Amazing Shake and participated in the judging of that. That's an awesome program, and it was fun to interact with the kids and to meet members of your staff. So congratulations for continuing to do that. I think that's quite a, an impressive experience for the kids that they will benefit from, um, as they go through life. What's your retention rate, um, in terms of students who start at New Vision and stay with you for a couple or three years, or maybe go all the way through? Does that make sense?
That's a really good question, um, and that's not one of the, the things that we tracked for this. That's a great, that's a great question. Um, I know we do have a lot of, we have pretty good retention. Um, I know right now we are getting a group of kindergarteners and like sixty-four out of a hundred and fifteen have siblings at New Vision. So it's, it kind of, once, once people enroll, we tend to see them stay with New Vision for quite some time. Um, but I don't have a percentile on, on how many students stay throughout their...
If you're able to get that, I would be interested in, in seeing that. Certainly no hurry, but I'd be interested in seeing that.
That, no, it's a great question and definitely a statisticary that we should, should have.
Okay.
Um, one question. So you said you have a hundred and fifteen kindergarten?
We do, yes.
So what about, what about the other grade levels? Are they about that as well, or is there, is there an up and down or?
Yeah, roughly. So we actually have five rounds of kindergarten, and the rest of our class sizes are four rounds. So our kinder classes are a little bit smaller, um, and as they move up, they drops to a hundred and twelve per grade level, and just the natural attrition. We have experienced, we haven't had any overfull classes.
Do you ever just cap like a certain grade level, like if you need to, to keep it at that? Is that what you have to do?
Yeah, so, um, we do cap our class sizes at twenty-eight per, per class, and then after that, people get into the waitlist.
All right. Anybody else have anything for this? Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Nice to see you again. I saw you put that.
Yes, yeah, thank you guys for having me.
All right, now we're on to the board meetings.
Correct.
Yes, sorry about that. No, 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 I, I just, I should have, I normally would look and I did not. Oh, pardon.
Um, so Madam President, members of the board, we are visiting our twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education meeting schedule a little earlier in the year than we normally do, just to help with scheduling the boardroom, to, um, allow schools to sign up for the study sessions and that kind of thing. That's why we're doing it in March instead of May. Um, it looks very similar to what it has in the past. We'll do, the first Wednesday of the month will be a study session. The third Wednesday will be our meeting, unless there's something odd for the month. So in October, it's regular for August and September. In October, um, the study session we recommend is the second, which is a Thursday, instead of the first, which is Wednesday in observance of, how do I say it, Alexandra?
Yeah, number four.
Yeah, number four. Um, so that is one change. Um, and then for October, the board meeting would be the fifteenth, and, um, in April, it would be the fifteenth, and those are both scheduled for birthday. In December, um, presuming with a new leadership, we'll still go to, um, have our study session at Casby, um, which I would think would be the third, and, um, they don't actually have their schedule out, but are going by what they've done in the past, so we can adjust this if we need to, but Casby's convention would be the fourth through the sixth. And then, um, in March, uh, the study session would be the first Wednesday, and then spring break always falls that third week, so the meeting would be the following week. So those are the ones that are one-offs. So if you guys, that's all I have that would be different.
Okay. Let's check for questions on any of this. Alexandra, any questions? I don't have any. Denise?
I would just like to be aware of parent-teacher conferences. Um, it's tricky for me this time of year. Um, so, I guess, and this happened in the fall as well. Um, parent-teacher conferences are the same, um, they were, they fell the same week as the board meetings. And I know that it's hard for staff as well, um, so I don't know if that could be looked at.
I did bring that forward to PCC when we were talking about calendar variations and all that, and it, it might take going through calendar committee this next year before it's totally resolved, but we might be able to, yeah. So I just want you to know that we did look at it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Nancy?
I was just gonna say, if we moved it still that first week of March, but made it the, the Tuesday, does that help, or no?
It's the third week where there are problems.
Because they're doing conferences.
Right, right. Right there, right.
And then when is the one in the fall?
It was the same.
Is it October?
October. October. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. And I know that it's challenging, right? Every school does it differently, you know? So it depends, you know, what kids, what staff, what parent, what, um, but it's tricky.
Well, in high school, you only, you got two nights.
Yeah, and the middle, the middle school have, will have an opportunity to do a variation of what they wanted that central. Don't they, elementary doesn't do variation, do they, Bill?
Yeah.
Do they do variations?
Mm-hmm.
A variance for conferences for elementary, they do as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's really just...
There's a different schedule for the schools, um, be, because they build it in a way that they can meet the needs of their community.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. Did you have any questions? Stu?
I don't.
Dawn?
So October might be a problem because of what you just brought up, because I also can't make this second work.
Okay.
So if two of us being out will be an issue, then we may need to look at an alternative for that meeting for the study session. If two of us being out, fine, then, yeah.
I mean, I mean, um...
Conferences aren't that week next year.
That's what I wonder, I haven't had someone with me.
In October, in October, next year, the conferences are the week of, uh, like October thirteenth. So there are the thirteenth.
Then it would be the...
The regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
That happened a year too.
Yeah, and then in March next year, conferences are, are that first week of March. Okay. But I would wonder about, since the, we're having the March, the regular meeting a week late, what if we had the first, the study session a week late as well, had it on the eleventh instead? And then it would conflict with conferences in March at least.
Check into that, okay?
Thank you.
Laura?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's up to you. Your policy does say the first and third, but I know we can change, and, I mean, this gets published, so I think, I think...
You have to put in a variation?
No, I think it's up to me.
Okay, I understand.
Send it to PCC.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? All righty. Thank you. All right. Five point four, am I right on the schedule now?
Yes, you are.
It's, um, first reading of policy BEC, executive sessions.
Right.
That's you.
Um, so this actually came about in twenty twenty-two. Um, the only thing that would change is number nine, and it is, um, regarding, um, the placement of a superintendent. So basically what happens, the only way you would go into executive session is if you, um, na, if you're working on employment contract with one or more superintendent finalists. So if you get to the point where you have more than one finalist and you need to work on a contract, um, you can go into executive session. The interviews have to be held publicly, but if you get to the point where you're in a contract situation, you can go into executive session. Um, and then you would have to, I mean, it's like anything in exec, you have to come back out, let people know what you've done, or, you know, not take any action in there. Um, so that is the only thing. This is state statute. Um, Coulter does have this, and she hasn't told me that anything needs to be different, but if anything would need to be different by the twenty-sixth, I would definitely want to know.
So we need to add number nine then?
Yeah, so it's just the red, yeah, if you see, if you look at the red line, everything else is the same except for number nine. So everything in number nine is brand new.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
How did we do the, how did the board do it before when they hired Mark?
I don't...
Because there not a...
I don't know that this was part of it at that point in time?
It wasn't. I don't, I honestly don't know.
There wasn't, was it, then maybe there wasn't more than one candidate?
Yeah?
I, I can answer any question.
Okay. What, what did we do? I, we were down to...
So, so basically, human resources contract, well, it was four finalists, so it was set on four different nights. And then, uh, human resources would work with each candidate to work a contract before, and we would give that information to the board as far as understanding like what agreement would be with each candidate, and you can have that discussion was an executive session.
Okay.
So this would allow us to do one meeting instead of...
We, we, we did one meeting after we'd had all of those in an executive session, didn't we?
Yeah, it was four separate days.
Eight.
It was a long days, and I went back to the district office and had the, had the interview, and then that discussion took place after, after the fourth day.
The fourth one.
Yeah.
It was like an executive session that we did then and made our decision. That make sense? Okay. All right, any questions on that?
Yes, I guess my question is for you, since you're the only person currently on the board who was on the board at that point.
That's terrible memory.
Um, how do you feel about this in light of the process that was used when Mark was hired?
How do you feel about this, this policy and this red line change?
I feel that we need to have that opportunity, to have that conversation amongst us without an audience, because we are actually talking about three or four different people at that point in time, needing to make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I appreciate your candid...
Yeah, we do need to do this.
All right.
I, I just don't know why it wasn't included, or maybe it wasn't even one that...
It wasn't, so they just, um, this came about in twenty twenty-two.
Needed to happen, yeah.
I'm guessing something happened that made them dis...
Okay. All right, thank you, Laura Lee.
You're welcome.
All right, the next one is five point five, which is our board resolution supporting students and families. And so the story behind this has been, um, let me get there. It's been quite a deal, because we originally had one that came at our last study session. And then we left, and two of us were gonna work on one, and then we kind of got the feeling that people were gonna write letters to the paper, so we kind of dropped that whole poss, um, process, and then felt the need to go back and, um, make a resolution. And so we took one and started to craft on it a little bit, and I sent it to Alexandra first, and she looked at it and put a little bit into it, and then that one went out to everybody. And then, um, we had feedback from Dawn and Stu and Nancy. Um, those are the ones, and so then Alexandra sat down and went through and helped combine the third, the new one that we saw, that was called, um,
Is it?
Hybrid. So it was a hybrid of the copy I've updated and then the additional suggestions, and that I think was the one that had, um, Nancy's one or the other. So there's three that we had to look at. And I need to have some feedback and get a feel for it, so that we can move one forward on next time, whatever that is, I don't remember. So I'm not gonna offer anything right now, but I'm gonna start with Denise, and if you have any thoughts on it. Or do you need a few minutes to glance over these, so you have them in your mind? Okay. Welcome back to you. How would that be?
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. Amy?
So... The ask is for us to comment on...
Well, which one?
Which one?
What, what you feel would be the right one to send forward, or if we still need to do some adjusting?
Okay. And my apologies, I didn't get to read email today.
Okay.
Board email.
That's all right.
What's the one sent today? Your hybrid combo, the one that's attached here? That says a hybrid, okay.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I don't really have any suggestions, um, other than um, I feel strongly that if we do a resolution, a proclamation, um, I strongly don't want it to say all staff, all students. I, we need to be very purposeful and say each student, each staff member, each community member. Um, I think that that is in line with, um, some of our other language, with, um, some of our other policies. Um, so...
Okay.
That's my feedback, but again, I didn't get to the hybrid one, so, sorry. I was...
All right. Nancy?
Um, I guess like, I, I've been given a lot of thought to this, and I'm still trying to understand what is... Who, who are we trying to speak to? What's the purpose of this? Um, is it just to reaffirm that we, we support each student, trying to use your language, each student, staff, family member? Or is it in relation, is it trying to be in relation to the immigration things that are happening, but we're not really saying that? I mean, what, what is it we're trying to do with this resolution is my first question. The second one is the top paragraph, and I don't know if we need to list all this out for law, it just, to me, it feels, it feels, it feels so much like we're putting everybody in a different silo, so it, to me, it feels, it doesn't feel unified, it feels divisive to me. And I'm a little confused about the addition of adding genetic information and then membership in any other actual or perceived protective class. Because I don't perceive protected class, I don't understand what law would even... I mean, somebody could say they perceived wrong to any, I don't know, I don't know what law would support that.
And Stu?
Um, I did have the opportunity to look at, um, I guess it was the second, um, draft and compare it with the hybrid. I'm okay with most of the hybrid, but let me mention three things in particular I'm, I'm not particularly okay with. First of all, I think the word community should be included in the first line, along with families and students and so on. Regarding, uh, the use of all and each, I recall that when we did the creation of policy ADB, which is the equity policy, that we... that we were advised to use the, the word each rather than all. And for that reason that we did, that it seemed to be more specific and seemed to cover every student individually rather than all the students collectively. And Barb, you were on the board at that time, and Dawn, you and I were. I don't believe that the other board members were on when we created ADB. That's my correct. That's my recollection, and if, if it's wrong, please, please correct me. My major objection is in the fifth paragraph of the hybrid with excluding, and I didn't write this down word for word, but re- uh, regarding excluding families and community regardless of religious immigration or LGBT, LGBTQ plus status. I wasn't present at the last meeting, um, cause I was out of town. But my impression was that that was really the purpose of the resolution, to cover all or some of those protected classes. And so that's, that's my reaction. If we could use the hybrid version and insert the things that I just mentioned, I would be fine with the hybrid version. If not, I think I probably couldn't vote to support the resolution. I shouldn't say I think I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to support the resolution.
Dawn?
I, I actually appreciate what you just said around what would be nice to add back in if we can. I'd love that. Um, to answer a couple of questions around where these, the language came from that's in there now. Um, we have four places where perceived is um related to what we already have. So our, um, our student code of conduct includes um holding them to the expectation of perceived characteristics. Uh, our bullying prevention includes perceived protection characteristics. Title six of the Civil Rights Act includes perceived religion. Um, and um, state law on bullying prevent- prevention includes perceived um imbalances of power. And so that language is really rooted in several important things. Um, and that's why that was important to me to add that back in. Because there is a lot of um harassment and discrimination that happens, not necessarily because of what somebody's characteristics are, but because of what people assume. And that is a big deal. And so I think, um, there, there, that was really important to us as we put it into the equity policy. And it's rooted in several other places that aren't just our language. And I, yeah, I think we, otherwise we carry, we covered all of where that comes from. So, good.
Alexandra?
So I agree that the first paragraph is a little clunky. I, putting that, I just copied all the, that list from like our policies that talk about that. So I think we don't necessarily need to have everything in there, but maybe we should have everything in there.
I disagree. I would vote for it if we took it out.
Okay. Um, so that's where that came from, and it is, it does make it a little long. I agree.
Yeah.
Um, I'm glad you explained the perceived thing. That makes more sense to me now, hearing it that way. As far as, um, adding back, I mean, I think sort of to Nancy's point and to your point, I think, you know, the purpose, as I understood it, is, is supporting, is, you know, in response to immigration, in response to, um, you know, difficulties that other, especially the LGBTQ, you know, students are facing, um, throughout. So I think that would be the, you know, a big purpose of it. And so if that's, he, that should be clear, I think. And so maybe it need, maybe we do need to add something back in to make it a little bit more that way. I mean, I think, but I guess those are my thoughts. I, you know, like I said, with the hybrid, I was just trying to kind of meld together where we could. Um, and one of the big things, one of the things I thought that, that, that whichever paragraph it is, one, two, three, four, the access to schools thing was, I, I would say that the way that it's worded in mine, in the hybrid one, I think makes a lot more sense than in either of the other ones. Um, so you guys can see what you think about that, but I thought that, that sentence was really hard for me to understand. Yeah, in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
I'm grateful that you took time to.
Yeah, thank, thank you for doing that.
To combine the two, because I was like, I don't even know where to begin, and I feel like, well, I'm a little crazy right now. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. And I appreciate the things that Stu said as far as putting him back in if possible. So somehow we'll get that done. Denise?
So, thank you everyone for the work that's already been done. Um, as I looked at the first paragraph, I needed the, all children, but even if we say each child. We also have one for our, our staff. We want it for the parents to know. So I feel like each child is very limiting there. And so if we can make that more inclusive in community, or whatever it may be, that the district is a safe place for everyone working in it, attending it. That feels more comfortable to me. Um, and that was really, and then, and that would have to carry through. I'll be able.
Amy? You're good? Okay. So we've been around, so here's what I'm gonna challenge you guys to do. Take a minute between now and Monday. And if you have some things that you want put into this, or we're, we're needing to get done, send me that copy. And then I'll be able to put it all together or see where we are with it. And I'll get it out to you before our next meeting, so you can see again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I. I, I do wanna just jump on one thing that you said real quick as we do that, because it may be helpful.
Uh huh.
The other reason that I included everything from our policy, including some of them that I was like, yeah, maybe not a reason. Um, they have been, it, uh, all of these have been included in, um, federal actions in the past few weeks. And then that was what I had in mind when I drafted it a month ago, is knowing that, um, changes were coming that were impacting, um, every group. I didn't want us to write something this week and then something a week from now that was hashing at all of this. Um, and some of the bullet points that I included in that longer version speak to maybe some of the protections that may be more geared towards a specific group instead of just immigration and LGBTQ, because there is literally not a group on here that isn't, um, already included. And.
So it has a little bit of homework.
Yeah, and staff, I think, is the other big thing that feels a little different here in the wording. Um, because we have a lot of employment obligations that aren't captured really in a, as, as deep. And I know it's long, it would may start to add all of it in, but, uh, we're in a position where that is our job.
All right. So if you guys can take a few minutes and get it to me Monday or Tuesday would be good. I, because we can have family coming in, so that would be helpful. All right. Any other comments, comments or questions? All right. Um, moving on to five point six, which is just our standard action consent items. I think she said it has personnel and it's got, um, the extra duty for March. So I'm sure there'll be more. There always are more that show up. Just be aware. And then, um, approval of expenditures over forty thousand will be a part of that as well.
Yeah, usually that's all one.
Yeah, it is.
It's just how it got sent to me. I couldn't separate them.
All right. That's fine. Okay. Next item is for Stu. It's our CASB, and I, I'm gonna let you just take over. I'm gonna get up and walk a little bit, cause last time we sat for too long, and I could hardly move the next day.
Right.
I'm gonna get up and move while we, this piece. I'm, I'm not leaving. I'm hearing.
I promise I will keep this to under two hours. Now, this is, darn it, I know you guys are disappointed with that. All right. This is probably the longest CASB report I've ever submitted. There is a lot going on at the state legislature. A lot of it is related to money and the, the budget shortfall that the legislature is very worried about and that we're also very worried about. Um, I'm gonna call particular attention to only two things that are part of the report. And then, um, I've had three meetings since I last reported to you. And so there are two new things that have come up, and I will be quick in, in mentioning those as well. Uh, if you happen to be looking at the report, um, I'm gonna talk first about HB twenty-five eleven ninety-two, which is the financial literacy graduation requirement. Um, I sent an individual email. I sent an, an email from me as an individual board member this morning to the members of the House Education Committee opposing this particular bill. It has immense financial implications for districts. Uh, it also is influencing on local control for districts like ours. We used to have, those of us who've been around for a while, we used to have an economics requirement for graduation. It was eliminated, uh, because of the financial implications of it. Uh, this particular bill is an unfunded mandate that is asking for that to come back. Uh, many of the school districts that were, that responded or that participated in the discussion I attended on Friday said, um, especially the small rural districts, this would be a real financial hardship on them. And of course, any school district could certainly, uh, introduce, or in our case, reintroduce having a financial, um, literacy course. The other thing that's concerning about this is requiring for graduation that all students would complete the FAFSA. During the discussion the other day, there was no one who thought that this was a good idea in terms of, of a statewide bill and a statewide requirement. So I wanted to just bring you up to date on that and also to let you know that as an individual board member, uh, I did send an email to the committee this morning opposing it. The other one to mention is, uh, House Bill twenty-five twelve seventy-eight, which is the one under eleven ninety-two. This is the, the new School Finance Act. There are some concerns that have been brought at this particular bill because of parts that, as I said in there, that there were recommendations set forth by the task force that were not recommended or that were not included in the current version. Uh, there are concerns about CMAS being the management, or pardon me, the measurement tool. There, there are concerns about some of the language related to DEI that's part of the bill. So the two new things, um, on Friday, uh, we talked about House, House Bill twenty-five twelve forty-five. Uh, this has to do with something that seems to be very innocuous, but it's very expensive. Um, these would be costs associated with installation or re- with regulations regarding the installation of HVAC units. And these would be imposed, um, regulations. And again, particularly the small districts were saying, legislature, you can't do this to us, particularly now in our current financial situation. Um, so the Legislative Relations Committee has opposed this, and I will keep you posted on this. Finally, I mentioned to you before that Governor Polis has suggested that we think about eliminating the averaging process, which is, uh, currently used to average and, and to try to, uh, enable districts to survive. That proposal is still circulating. And so we were asked to provide information from our own school districts as to what kind of a hit this would be to us financially in the millions of dollars if this averaging proposal would be enacted. Bob and I, uh, exchanged emails today about this, and he's going to a meeting on Friday. And so he will give me some of this information. This is very concerning to me as a board member. I think this averaging proposal would be devastating, uh, to many school districts in the state, including Thompson School District in regard to the amount of money that would be available. And, uh, pardon me for an editorial comment, but after the study I've done and the listening that I've done to various folks from around the state, um, I'm very concerned about this. And I'll be interested to see what, what Bob has to furnish us, and then, uh, we will send it out to you. So.
I have an update.
Go for it then.
Uh, the House and Polis's office came to an agreement that has been publicized as of yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
Um, the averaging, um, is reduced to three years instead of five, which we, um, suspected would be pro- probably how it would show up on the radar. Um, the cuts to education statewide are fifty million instead of a hundred and fifty million. And there are a bunch of ways that that's getting calculated. It's not just a straight cut for all districts. It's impacts to grant programs and things like that. So, um, the, the biggest impact that was universal was the averaging. They're gonna, um, move it to three years, which will impact us, but it's better than getting rid of it overnight entirely. So that's where, that's where we're at as of yesterday afternoon.
Oh, tha- thanks for that, that update. I'm concerned, I'm still concerned about the three years and the fifty million, but at least it's not five years and a hundred and fifty million. So I will be interested to see, um, what, what shakes out there. And, and I still will be very interested to, to receive the information from Bob as to what the impact will be on us. So, thank you, Madam President.
All right. Anybody have any additional comments or questions for Stu?
I just have a question. When you were talking about the, the financial literacy graduation requirements. And you said that it would, um, incur a cost on districts. What, what would that cost?
It would be an FTE cost for many districts, because they would have to add that course into the curriculum and their, so there would be cost for the instructor, there would be cost for materials, for curriculum purchase, et cetera. That's where the additional cost would come in.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Stu. All right. Well, move into our topics for tonight, and we're gonna begin with seven point one, which is our superintendent search, which is on all of our minds. So Randy is here, so Randy, come on over. Randy and I have known each other a long time. So, um, this is Randy. He'll be working with us as we work through this, and he's got some plans for us tonight, some things to share.
Sure.
Okay.
First, let me shake everybody's hand. Nancy, how are you?
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hi, I'm Alexandra.
Would you like help with anything? No. Okay. Thank you. I'm kinda old school.
Can you just sit over here? Okay.
Well, let's talk about your superintendent search.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm here to try to answer any questions that you have, here to give you an update. Uh, I believe you, and I brought in hard copies of an interim working copy of the survey that I sent out. It had eight hundred and two responses. I found out on my way over, we're at two thousand.
Sorry, how many?
Eight, eight hundred and two.
It's got up to a thousand now.
Yeah. So, uh, that is a really good response. And I'm gonna thank Mike, cause he's really worked hard in pushing out the.
Yeah, everywhere you turn, it's there. You can't, you have to X out like so many times.
So I have to contribute the success rate.
But it's good.
To his efforts of getting it out there. So, um, you're about to enter a period of probably the staff and community about fear because of the unknown. We're gonna do our best that people. We're going to do our best that people will know about the process. I am very transparent, so the things that I do I'll be asked to be put on the website, such as when this report is done, we'll combine the aggregate of it, but it will also be broken out and disaggregated by the people that filled it out. So, the board will get a report about all the parents and just the parents' answers and community members and teachers and staff and so forth. So, we'll do that. I have some objectives for tonight. In our timeline, we wanted to get your posting for the vacancy. That announcement to go up March 14. And we shortened a little bit of the posting duration just to help speed the processing, get a person on board for the school district and maybe have some transition time with Mark before he leaves and takes off. So, that would be beneficial, as well as introductions and meeting with the staff. My cohort could not be here tonight, Dr. Cooper. He is in New Orleans, actually, at a conference down there, but he will be visible with me. And we plan on at least asking for people's help because we'd like to meet with the cabinet. We'd also like to probably meet with representative of the staff, and we do that either face-to-face or virtually. And we'll set those meetings up through Mike. As well, as I asked Mike today, we want to meet with students. So, you do have some student groups, student leader groups, and we at least want to zero in with some of the high school groups so we get a strong student input and voice on that. So, my goals tonight is to get the board's qualifications and criteria for the next superintendent. Probably the bigger issue is to set the compensation parameters. I like to meet the letter of the law, and we no longer can do postings without having that compensation on there and having a pretty good idea about what the board's tolerance is in terms of that salary range. I have a suggestion, but it's definitely up for discussion. So, being an old superintendent, I like to pontificate when I get in the chair, so I've been cautioning myself. And I also used to remind my administrators to CYA and they'd all chuckle, and I said, "No, it means check your assumptions." So, I want to check those assumptions and get some questions answered before we dive into those two aspects that I'd like to accomplish tonight. So, what questions do you have for me? We pretty much laid things out in our proposal. I watched the board meeting, I appreciate the feedback. Matter of fact, we've already said, "How can we spice up our proposal so it matches some other companies?" So, we appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that we've, I personally have lived in the community, been an administrator in the district, and our kids have graduated. Thanks, Stu. And so, we're fairly familiar with the district and have seen the changes that have come and the growth. So, back when I was an administrator, we were right around 13,000 to 14,000 students here in the Thompson School District and a lot less buildings, so. What questions do you have for me? Yes?
I just have the survey that we've sent out to the community. Is this a standard survey or was it, is it particularly for TLD?
Both.
Okay.
Okay. We start with the standard and then we've kind of tailored made. I know there is some difficulty because it requires people to answer a question. I can't skip over it and go to the next. So, and the reason for that is we want comparable data.
Sure.
Because some people want to hop right to the last question and then, you know, they have a lot to say and so forth. But we want, those other things are very important. So, what other questions? And I'm prepared to go a little bit through the survey if you want to do that.
Did everybody, did you send it to everybody?
Yes.
Everybody got it?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find it.
No, I brought you a hard copy.
Oh, good.
You said you would.
Barbie, is it okay if I ask a question?
Oh, thank you.
Of course, yeah. Nancy?
So, you said, if I understood you right, you wanted tonight to know what qualifications and criteria we want? Because this is my first time doing this. Is there, do you have like a sample?
I'm glad you asked that.
Something to give me a hint?
I brought in the 2018 board qualifications for when Mark was hired. Now, they're a little different, so give me a second to find them. And why I got this out, Barb, this is the contract. Okay? Well, I did have them. And I'll hand those out to you. So, the last McPherson and Jacobson person to lead your search was Tom Jacobson. He was the president and CEO of McPherson. He has passed away. And a couple of years ago. And so, he did the search. And happy to say that we tried to get a little more creative in the qualifications. So, once I get those from the board, then I put them into some categories that I'll talk about and try to get those cleaned up and make them real presentable for people that, thank you. are interested in looking at this position. So, why I bird walked just a little bit, we have been contacted, I personally, as well as Dr. Cooper, by people already. I was contacted way before the board announced the search company that you're going to go with and people asking questions. So, you've already generated, you know, interest, and some of those are from out of state. So, I'll tell you that, and there are some in-state. So, whether they apply or not, we'll find out. So, in your little interim report, we kind of give the introduction. We think some of this will change by the time the survey closes. It closes March 12. And then, we will do the aggregate of this information and then have a nice report back to you, and again disaggregated by the different groups and so forth. So, if anything in this report would help use more towards the end where people are talking about what they would like to see in the qualifications or anything else that they've added on in this. So, I will give you just a few seconds to look through that if you haven't already today, so.
I found this, I filled it out as a community member, and I found it really hard because I had to generate the answers. It wasn't a multiple choice, which is oftentimes what we see in education. "Here are your options, pick this." And so, I really had a hard time thinking deeply about it because I had to find the right one.
And that was actually kind of the purpose.
I figured it had to be. And so, there has to be a wealth of information that you have from all of this.
So, there will be a wealth of information. So, let me give you a couple other purposes for the survey. Not only does it inform the board, but as we screen candidates, you may want to use this as a screening tool too, which we will do. And then, I also know there was a question from the board meeting about a portal to all the applications. You will see all the applications that come in. And I'll work, I'm working on that portal. But we not only give you what we think is your top-tier group compared to your qualifications, as well as what we get from this report. So, we use this as a recruiting tool also. But it's also a very informational, also could be used as a rubric to help screen those candidates. And you'll be getting a lot of data points from us. So, this is just one. The report will be one. As we go through the process, we ask candidates to do a digital interview for the board, so you'll be able to have a digital interview. We're going to recommend that we do a community public forum at probably one of the high schools where the community will send in questions that they would like to see. It's a formal public forum, so it's not where we hand Mike off into the community because it'll take us a while to get there. But we solicit questions that we'll ask the candidates. In a way, that's a public community interview and so. And then, after that, we like to have a meet and greet. So, where the candidates will be and individuals can go up to the candidates, ask them any individual questions they have. We elicit a feedback from that event. We get that all ready for the board. That would be another data point from that. We ask the board to attend that, to observe because of your observation of how the candidates interact with the community, how they interact individually is very important. It will reveal a lot about the candidates. And as I said, that's another data point to make a decision. Their application will be another data point. And we'll make sure that as we go, you know how many people have applied and you have the ability to look at those applications. So, again, very transparent. Now, that part is confidential under Colorado law. And so, we'll keep that. And then, the board will have that information. And then, once you get to the place where you want to narrow all the candidates down to your final list, now that becomes open records. So, you'll have that. All right, that was Randy's nutshell, kind of the process. We'll set up the interviews how you want to. At some point, we're going to ask if you want ad hoc advisory committees to form their own little interview team and interview the candidates, but provide you feedback from their interviews. Tell them not to rank order candidates because the board is going to have another data point, which will be reference checks on each of the candidates. So, we provide that. We try to do a very extensive reference checks. And we just don't check. So, you know, when I get one and I have three references, I know they're going to say, "This person probably walks on water." I'm going to go, because I'm well-connected, I'm going to go elsewhere and ask people unsolicited about their performance and things that we should know for the board. So, that's another reference point that you'll have in determining next superintendent. The only thing about all these processes is that we don't have, because of the time, we can't spend a week with one candidate. We can't go spend another week with one, because of the timeline. So, we are going to do everything that we can to help support the board in increasing a very high probability that you will get a successful candidate. I noticed Stu mentioned at the last board meeting too that if you don't find somebody in there, what are your alternatives? And we, if we don't, we will for no charge set up an interim situation. We're already checking our resources just in case, so we're well-prepared for that. And so, the board will have some options and choices. But we're going to think positive intent, and we are going to find a good candidate. I'm encouraged by the people that have been reaching out already about the district. In your report, you'll find out some of the good things about your community, which we ask. And it is favorable. It's right below the Rocky Mountain National Park. It's got a great reputation. It always has. That's one of the reasons we moved here from Wayback Land when I became a principal here. And so, you have a lot in the area going for yourself. Don't discount the strengths of your district. Your schools all have a real good reputation. Now, can we get better? Absolutely. But the overall balcony view of the district is strong schools, great community, which lends itself to be really good into the search. Did I say, "Old superintendents like to pontificate?" So, I'm sorry. So, my goals, and this is new for some of you, is and is to kind of find out what you're thinking about, what kind of qualifications and in terms of leadership, instructional leadership, things about communication.
Please pardon the interruption.
Well, the good thing is I saw some happy people today.
Please pardon the interruption. Thank you for coming out tonight, ponderosa families. We have reached that time of the evening where we need to start finishing up those conversations with teachers. So, if you need to schedule an additional time, please do that with the teacher now. Other than that, thanks for coming out, and we'll see you next week. Have a good evening.
Oh, great.
So, there's more school districts? I'm not on that side anymore.
So, the areas that I'd like to get your posting in and be able to post the job is, I'm going to be looking for those things that you tell me, and then I'm going to be putting those into some different categories. I take those, and they can be one-bullet words, and I'm going to wordsmith it and get it to what we think is a high-quality posting for you guys. That posting, so you know, goes on McPherson's site, which is national. It'll reach a ton of people. We've even actually sent out an email, a broadcast email, to all the people that have signed up the site. So, it'll probably go out to about 5,000 people across the country itself. In your package, we'll probably do a little AASA advertising though. I'm being honest, I don't always see a lot of candidates from that. So, McPherson, it'll be with Casby. Casby will get it posted for us. They're connected to the National School Board, so it gets there. We are also in partnership with CASE, the Colorado Association of School Executives. So, they'll have it there too. And then, we do a brief thing in Educational Week. And then, if there's any others that you are aware of that you would like advertised, we'll do that too, so. Good? So, I talked a little bit about the categories that when I hear your responses, I'll be looking at educational and instructional leadership, collaborative leadership, just even leadership competence. Visionary, you know, as I look out. I call it financial acumen. So, you know, do they have some knowledge about finances? You know, not necessarily they have to be a CPA, but they should have some idea about that. Then, where the board is on what kind of experience you're looking for as well as just preferred. Good? All right. Barb said I only had 20 minutes, and I'm already past. So, why don't we start with what kind of qualifications, criteria you think we have as a board? Spit them out?
Show them out.
What I have is that it's a person who hires well and hires people who challenge that person and like expands their reach versus someone who has a history of hiring people they know or people that aren't going to challenge them. So, it's somehow weeding out people who are uncomfortable with being questioned.
I would add to that. Someone who is really strong at holding all of the staff from cabinet down accountable objectively without attaching to the relationship.
Yes.
I'm not certain how to word this next one. It just keeps rolling in my head, but... Someone who can easily go back and forth between trying to get policies and procedures in place that are followed by all, while at the same time making sure the way it's rolled out respects the autonomy and professionalism of the teachers. respects the autonomy and professionalism of the teachers. There's been some bumps with that, like someone who can manage that, walk that line always better.
Or has a vision of that.
Are we doing in order or?
No, we're just kind of going.
Okay. So I would say, I mean, one thing, I think the like good financial stuff is important, especially as we are facing budgetary issues. Being able to navigate that and work closely with our CFO and figure out how to meet the needs of the district within the constraints that we have, I think is important. I also think it's important that, you know, we live in a, I guess, a purple community, right? Where we have very, very, very varying viewpoints from across the spectrum. And so I think it needs to be somebody who can really help with that, with working with all different spectrum of stakeholders and helping, you know, and while corralling support for the district. Again, I don't know exactly how to say it, but I think, you know, somebody who's sort of to Denise's point, but I know she was talking more about staff, but you know, somebody who's very comfortable with navigating strong viewpoints on different ways and I don't know, I'm not talking very well, but hopefully you know what I mean.
I think add to that, not afraid to go out into the community.
Right.
Not just like they live in the school building, but they have, it's everywhere that he needs to be, she needs to be present in what we have going on.
A synonym for what I think you were trying to say is consensus building. That's in the spirit anyway, which was one of the words I wrote down. And also conflict management. I think, you know, getting a balance of somebody who can handle making the hard decisions and standing beside the hard decisions and staying that well and having people like get on board and also being willing to adapt and listen and build consensus is really helpful. The word I would use around community building is advocate, right? Like we need somebody who's the biggest true leader for the district all the time, everywhere. And in an authentic way, an awareness of where the warts are and how we're doing continuous improvement and where we need to do the work, being real about communicating that, while also being able to be visionary to get us there. Invest in class and transformative are two words that I think have came up a lot in what we're doing.
Like the words you were saying, like they were coming to my head just as you were saying. I'm so really resonate with what you just said. But and then someone who, once decisions are made, can lead everybody on that journey and continue to do the work. Because I've been around a lot of leaders who get you to that point and then they kind of all, you know, they're onto the next thing to lead you to. So you can deliver on the changes necessary.
So what color is that going to be?
Oh no, you guys.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, we did.
That's what you said, birdwalk.
Yeah.
I'm currently in five other searches and three out of the five have asked candidates to do a DISC behavioral assessment. So I don't know if that's something that the board wants. That's another data point that they've been using. What goes with the DISC is another assessment called driving forces. So the driving forces compares their leadership to your qualities and tells you what their strengths and stuff are.
You do not want it.
You do not?
I don't.
I don't think I'm interested in that either.
No, I appreciate knowing it about somebody once we've chosen them for their competencies.
You know what, that might be what we would want to do something like this, like we did with Mark afterwards. Versus not having it control our.
It should not be used for hiring decisions and I would be very concerned about anyone who's choosing to do that.
Yeah, no, it's just another data point.
So Randy, I appreciate having the qualifications from 2018. Many of those are on the list that I prepared. I would amend one of them, but I was very pleased to see that the first one was possesses robust communication and listening skills. And I would amend that to be active listening skills. Because there is a difference between listening and listening actively. Just a quick story, a number of years back, we had a new superintendent who came to Berthold High when I was teaching there. And his purpose was to get our feedback. He was with us for about an hour. He didn't take any notes. He had no one with him to take any notes. And so it's very obvious to all of us that he was playing the game, but he really wasn't being an active listener and wasn't that interested. Now, could I have been wrong? I've never been wrong. But I suppose that could be the case. But anyway, in regard to that first one, I would appreciate possesses robust communication and active listening skills and that we can experience evidence of it. So in other words, when someone comes, I'd like to hear that person speak. I'd like evidence of their active listening. I'd like to see writing that they produce with the understanding that they don't have to be a skilled writer because they will have somebody probably as part of their office staff who can help them. But that's very important. I also am interested in somebody who has leadership experience regarding student behavior. Because that's a challenge now everywhere. We've touched on this a little bit. I'm interested in somebody who has leadership in strategic planning. We're in our strategic plan, Randy, is 2025. And not that I would expect that person would immediately launch into doing something totally different. I want somebody who has experience in doing strategic planning. And I also want somebody who has some knowledge of Thompson School District. You mentioned that our district is well-regarded. I expect at the point that we would come to an interview that this person would be able to share some knowledge about our district. That tells me that the person really wants the job and is interested in knowing as much about the community as possible. The only other thing I will say is that you mentioned wanting students. As part of this process, Mark has three student advisory groups. He has an elementary group, a middle school group and a high school group. And most of us have met with these kids at one time or another and are like, wow, can we get them on staff? So if you're looking for students, I think that's a pool that's already in existence for which to draw.
Mike had told me that, so we were very happy. We'll work through Mike to you, but I think it's said. But we're finding the student voice in this process is very powerful. And I don't want to leave them out.
And they're used to providing their voice.
Right.
Yeah, so that's really good. Thank you.
And to the degree that we can, all of those ages would be important. Not everybody resonates with every group, but I'd like to see all of the kids feel that they have a voice.
Sure.
The three groups.
I want somebody real, that can relate to everybody, not just the people at their building, but they can go out and be comfortable with teachers or with classified, with students. First grade, getting down. You know, it's one thing to watch them and make comment about what they're doing, but to actually sit down and interact with them, play a game with them, if that's what it takes. I want to see somebody that's really totally engaged in, with the kids as well.
Thank you.
Stuff like and their love for education.
Yeah. Lifelong learner and that's part of working with kids. Amy, you've been quiet.
Yeah, Stu brought up my main point, somebody who's familiar, comfortable addressing student behavior, both student side, staff side. Because that's a big topic.
I think also, I mean, this sort of is a lot of it, but I think also, I mean, we've heard a lot about, you know, sort of like the transparency and authenticity and openness and being real and being, I mean, I think that's important. Somebody that you can take at face value and that, you know, that people trust. I mean, I think trust would be a huge thing. That is trustworthy and honest. And I mean, you know, a lot of the qualifications are things you would want for anybody, but I think that that is important.
So I, real quick, someone who's had success passing a bond in a moment. Please, yes, please.
It took me a while.
Yes.
I know that, I believe that from Dr. Schaefer, this was his first like true superintendent position. And it's worked out really well. I think though that where the district is and some of the things that are coming in front of us, I would probably, I probably want to look at someone who has maybe at least five years. Just from my perspective of, with all the different things that we have coming ahead. Again, it worked out great with Dr. Schaefer, this being his first, but I think for this next phase, we should look for someone with five years, maybe three, but something.
Do you need experience as a superintendent?
Uh huh, yes.
So would that be preferred?
Yeah.
Because you might get a candidate that is really strong.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say that it has to be.
I don't think it would be a disqualifier, but I think.
Preferred for someone in a bigger district that has a significant span of control and decision-making.
Right, we have some assistant superintendents where, I mean, they're not all, you know, it's not all the same, right? Like some people have had a lot. I think humility and warmth as well as being courageous and bold. It is something that can be, right, be strong and know when not to beat. And then risk management, legal issues. Especially regarding, you know, laws and navigating that is going to be really important. And that did seem to come up already with a lot of survey responses. So having somebody who's more first in that would be awesome.
So Randy, just a comment about what Nancy said. I would be interested in knowing what the person's experience has been. For me, that's not a qualifier necessarily, or I should say a disqualifier. I'd be interested in looking at it, but for me, that's not necessarily a requirement.
I didn't, I had a preferred kind of situation.
I agree too. That when they say something, for instance, an open door policy. If they say, I will have an open door policy, then I want that to be okay for everybody. Not just certain people or certain groups of people. That if he's gonna, they're going to be able to sit and listen and talk with people and listen to what their issues are. Doesn't matter where you're coming from, if you have something and this person has said, I have an open door, come on in, but then when you called to make appointment, you can't get an appointment. So.
I think that comes down to like valuing and also thinking about the hierarchy. So I think about how you're really building people, empowering people is a part of that as well.
Better way of saying it than what I said.
No, it was good.
Anybody else?
So you think you'll have somebody by tomorrow?
Somebody's just rising up to the door, right?
I'll be right at your door tomorrow.
Does that, I mean, do you have sort of what you?
I need, I have what I need.
Okay, okay.
So the last part, we've run over a little bit of time is that compensation package. So I'm open to ideas or I'll give you a suggestion and you can tear it apart and go from there. So in my research and even in median and mean salary ranges in the area and stuff, for Thompson, I'm thinking it'd be 225 to 250. And that's currently where your superintendent is at right now. Depending on experience in qualifications.
Is that inclusive of like car allowance, everything or is that?
That comes within the contract. Those things are negotiated with the candidate. This would just be base salary.
Just base salary.
Yeah. And we help you with contract negotiations too. So I do have just a little compensation commitment form with the candidates. So by the time you're ready to make a decision, you'll know what they're really asking for salary-wise and any other benefits on the contract. It helps you get through that contract signing with a candidate quicker. And also allows them to know what the board is thinking. But I represent you. So if somebody said, I gotta have 265 and then I say, I will check with the board and see what their tolerance is for that. But I'll have that information before you go in to deliberations.
It does seem like a fairly tight band.
It's too tight.
Yeah, like 225 to 275 feels even tight, but I could live with it. Or go down. I'd be surprised if we could get someone for two months. Particularly with everything we just listed.
Randy, at some point you'll provide us with a compensation package for superintendents of neighboring districts or close districts, particularly ones that have student populations that are about the same as ours. Maybe demographic similarities, right? You'll provide that for us.
In reality, you're sandwiched between Hootier and St. Brain. And there's a, being honest, you cannot even compete with St. Brain's salary.
Well, and they're much larger districts, particularly St. Brain.
Yeah, you might look towards the east a little bit, to Greeley though, their population is.
Yeah, that's why I said student population and also demographics. That would be more similar to ours than Hootier and St. Brain.
Yes, Stu, I already started looking at districts across the state your size.
All right.
But the reality is everybody is just kind of over the board. There's no consistency depending on their location. So for example, like Grand Junction mirrors Thompson a little bit.
Are there a lot of districts looking right now?
I'm doing, you're my sixth, so, but the others are very small districts. So for me, there's six, there's a couple down south. Bayfield is open too, just opened up. Fort Lupton will, and Fort Lupton's going to go about 190 to 210. But they only have 2,000 students. Same with Eaton, 2,000 students, but they went about 190 to 210.
Yeah, so with our size.
Yeah, you know, you're up in the upper bigger district, arrangement district. So let me ask the board again, where, I just suggested that range. And I heard somebody say maybe even bump it up higher. Is that correct?
My reaction there is I trust our two board members who've had some experience in HR, Denise and Dawn. And if they think maybe 225 to 250 is a little too tight, is that the word that you used? I'm fine to go up to 275 based on your advice, your experience, et cetera. Because I don't have experience in this area.
And I'd say depending upon their qualifications and, yeah, you know, that's part of that is.
Yeah.
We do need, I think, a bigger band. I'm sticking on, on it, period. I, I'm just going to say the thing. I find it troubling and.
on it, period. I, I'm just gonna say the thing. I find it troubling and hard when we have a significant gap between what we pay you know, our entry level to an executive. Um and we're nowhere near where I actually do sleep, um because to your point, you know, we gotta have somebody who can afford to live here and do this hard job for what we pay. Um but it's, it's tough for me to have one position that we pay a, a real com- competitive package to when we can't do that for staff. And I'm like, I'm about to cry. I really, that bugs me a lot. I know, I know, but I'm, I'm angry and I just have to say that.
I, I understand the higher band. Um it's just, if we start them really close to the top of the high band at two seventy-five, then I mean, we were fortunate in that Dr. Schaefer many times um skipped taking a, a raise.
Yeah, we did never tell him no if he asked, though, either.
Right, but I don't know that we can count on that um going forward. And so if we bring somebody in at two seventy-five, then the next year, they're going to be, and, and so I, I agree with Dawn in thinking about, we're trying to figure out this year, how do we do raises for entry level? I, it's a
I, I know, it's a catch twenty-two. So let me ask, are you compromised to go to two twenty-five to two sixty-five?
What if we did two twenty to two seventy? Or does it have to end in a five? Does that sound like?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
I just brought it in for the board.
Three to sixty-five. Two in.
Yeah, 'cause I also think about us wanting someone with experience and things like that. And that's where this become, you know, I mean, like having a candidate in front of you is a very different conversation than this arbitrary one, because we've covered a lot of ground.
And maybe we're not ready till we see some of those other numbers.
Yeah.
But we recognize we do need to pay to get the right type of talent.
We do.
Um but let's get a little more market data in our hands and then we can give you a number.
But if you need to have a number to post.
Oh, I need to, if I'm gonna stay on a timeline, you can soon as you ask.
Well, so when you, when we put that on there, it doesn't include any of the other things that go with it?
The only other thing I, I usually include is, is it family, medical, health, vision, dental, or is it just single coverage?
Cause I
Well, do you have any of these?
Well, yeah.
Can I what?
I'm asking Bill, do you have any of the competitive?
We uh work as a HR across the state and we can pull information, right, because other districts always ask, right? Because if they're hiring a superintendent, then instead of going to a core request for districts, what they do is they create a spreadsheet. So, so I'm kinda looking for an updated one that we just did.
Okay. Is that something you could have to us in twenty-four hours?
Uh I probably can have it in twenty-four minutes.
Okay, I like that number.
Wow. Yeah, so I asked Mark today, I just sent him a text. Um I said, what did your starting package include? And I, I checked to see what it was. And it was um medical, dental, vision, memberships, um mileage reimbursement, up to seven thousand is what we had. No, 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 my, it's seven thousand moving expense.
Mm-hmm.
And that was something that was, and then the regiment and the sick leave and personal days that were there. But um it depends on where they're coming from, is that?
Right.
Is false.
Yeah, okay.
So we're waiting for data from Bill?
Of all the numbers that were thrown out, I think the two twenty to two sixty feels like the closest. And I, uh, we also have the ability to negotiate for somebody who may need it, but that band for posting I have the least offense to.
I would agree. I like that.
All, all superintendent contracts are subject to negotiation.
Yeah.
So, so it could be a give and take. It may be where you're, set your limit or what your tolerance for any additional. And did he get family health, did you say?
Yes, it was family. Well, wait a minute, I lost it. Um.
Family moving expense. Um. Mileage.
Employee. No, no, no. No, it didn't say family, just said medical, dental, vision, as far as said, it didn't say family.
So Bill, do you know if he gets family health benefits?
So it's just, it's just.
Just like everybody else.
So it's just single, okay. That's what I needed to know. Just know that some in my experience.
They'll want that.
They may want to negotiate that, but we'll put it out there.
Oh, but see, that, I mean, see, this is sort of just a philosophical thing, but sort of to Dawn's point, to me, that's so unfair. Because we don't pay that for anybody else who's making way less money, so why should we pay that for somebody who's making the most money of anybody?
No, I'm advocating one way or the other. I'm just trying to help you guys.
No, I know, but it's just, it's, it's hard. I mean, it's really hard. It's just, it's hard.
So if I could just come back to qualifications, I think maybe Barb mentioned it. Um do you guys have a residency requirement for the superintendent?
Oh, that they live in our district?
Yes.
I do. I think Colorado law, Colorado school law is crazy. Colorado school finance, I mean.
No, I mean, I think he means
In Thompson.
So they live in the top.
Oh, in Thompson, I thought you said in Colorado.
Many of the districts, except your bigger ones around you, but the, the more you're
They do, they do.
They require a residency requirement. They want, they want their superintendent to live
That they have to live here?
Oh, you need to live here after.
Okay, after.
I did like that, and I liked that his daughter went to our school within our district, and I think that it's
Yes.
gave him a bigger buy-in than I think we
They just would have felt.
That's what I mean, I'm sorry. They, they require the superintendent to live within the boundaries of the district, so.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
But that's, you know.
They.
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 They have to live.
We're, we're now the they.
But that's negotiations too, if you got a great candidate that has a house in Fort Collins and
Right, like I, yeah.
Fort Collins is in our district.
Some districts are now saying to be within twenty-five to thirty minutes of being within our district. So there's some room and latitude in that, but I think people need to know upfront that
I, I mean, I guess that would be a preferred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
I mean, we want them to be present.
Yeah.
Part of being present and not being close.
Right. So let me just check my assumptions. Two twenty to two sixty, is that what I, Nancy had nods, is that? Okay. Right, and single family health, and that's vision and dental.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay, good. I've accomplished our two tasks.
Excellent.
What questions do you have for me?
I have one.
Yes.
When are you gonna start gathering information? I know you've had a sub survey, but like a group, any group meetings?
A great question. So we're already planning on working with Mike to uh meet with the central, or I call them direct reports to the superintendent, because we think it's important to hear from them. And then are there other groups that you would like for us to meet with? With a thousand responses back and the majority are parents and stuff, I don't know how many people we would get that show up to a, what we call a focus group. We'll get some, but the number usually isn't very big. The reason being is everybody's life is really busy. We can never schedule it around everybody's schedule.
If Mike puts it out, everyone will know. They'll have no choice but to see it. That helps a lot.
Yeah, and we appreciate Mike a lot. And he's our, by the way, he's our contact person.
I, I love her better than my sister.
So is there any other specific stakeholder groups that you would like for us to visit and have a focus group with? And if so, what would those be?
Oh, I just feel like we almost need to offer at least a community one um of some sort, whether it be at the library or whether it be at, at the
Yeah, we can do that.
At a school.
And if you do that, I'm gonna say we need one in Berthoud.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have some.
Right, so, but I feel like a community one that will, and they can't say, well, they didn't ask me what I wanted.
No, that's, that's what we're planning, so. We're also planning the student one, so you know that.
Well, I think
And then we're trying to figure the, it's staff.
Staff, yeah.
So we think that's important too.
And I think with staff scheduling it at various times, you know, there are certain staff who have not as flexible schedules, so.
We'll work with Mike on, on that.
I, I think
And not box the board down, we're trying to figure that out.
Sure. I think it's worth thinking about um a focus group, whether you wanna call them community leaders or influencers or um people who have indicated a real interest in the school district. Maybe even more from the community member um aspect than who would necessarily be parents.
Sure.
What, what if we reached out to like Mindy McLeone from the chamber? I know that Dr. Schaefer and her have a really good relationship, but that would like maybe connect, pull in some of the, the business,
Yes, that was my next statement is, they wanna focus on, um is it the, I would say the chamber, because you get a lot of representation there.
Well, he does groups with Rotary, the Realtors, the
Yeah, he does.
You know, all of his community outreach groups that
Right.
So.
Randy, it's not gonna surprise you when they say, let's make sure that Berthoud is included in this.
I think I said that, I mean, be sure that I'll get them all to meet out at Bill Markham's.
There you go.
Buggies.
That's the wrong school district.
Yeah, yeah.
W or raise your?
Yeah, it's, my timer was twenty-four minutes, and I think I'm
You're under.
Under twenty-four minutes. So it gives you just an idea, like years of experience in the position, like Greeley Superintendent's been there ten years, so it gives you an idea with experience. But T, Tuesday was two twenty, Poot, Pooter was two seventy-three, R, R U four, which is Windsor's two twenty, Boulder's three oh six, St. Brain three fifty-five. Greeley's three eighteen, and Littleton is two sixty, and Littleton's our closest, right, because I think they're sixteen or seventeen in size.
What was the Littleton figure again, Bill?
Littleton was two sixty.
Okay.
So like Greeley, like I said, Superintendent's been there ten, ten, ten years, but it gives you an idea, and that's the twenty-three, twenty-four base.
Okay.
Okay.
So it just gives you an idea, like experienced superintendents, that, that's, that's where the salaries are.
Could you send that information to us and to Randy?
At least like those, that you, you spot checked if you, even, even if it's just those.
Bill, did you get a, of the case or CDE website?
Well, it's on CDE website, but we connected with other HR departments too.
Okay, yeah, send that out, because I was on CDE's salary schedule for the districts across the state.
Nice to know.
So I think you're in the range, two twenty to two sixty, so. Good.
And we are even on the low end of that for comparable, which is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, and oh, Johnstown's at two twenty, Bill, too.
Johnstown?
Yeah.
Come up.
The five.
R U five?
Johnstown?
Our, our, yeah, they're at two twenty. And actually, it's
Yeah, what's Superintendent's number? Two, two, three?
Two years, he gave his entry salary was two twenty.
What's the size there?
They are right under four thousand, about thirty-seven, I think.
Wow.
You know, I'm, sorry, I can't be late.
No, 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 we have still more things to do.
So, so just so you know, I'll be, uh, Dr. Cooper and I will be working with Mike to set up those focus groups and and then we'll report, you'll have a report about what we're having, we're doing. I would just request that board members not come to those focus groups.
Actually, I figured.
But the, the meetings that you do want us at, can we be notified as soon as?
I want you at that meet and greet and public forum for sure. And any others, we will definitely.
So then, when do we get a check-in from you, like?
Oh, weekly.
Okay, and is that by email or?
I mean, Mike's our contact person, but on the board, is it Barb that you want me to, okay.
Okay.
Barb, you're gonna get tired of my texts and then phone calls and emails.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any more questions or thoughts for Randy?
We appreciate your help.
Yes.
Sure. We're anticipating the, the day of the posting, uh, hopefully we'll have your composite report done from the community survey.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be on that.
All righty, thank you, Randy.
You bet. Nice to meet everyone.
Nice to meet you.
What do I do with this? You need a sign tonight?
No, when I have time.
Okay, all right, I'll read it and then
Okay, please read it, yeah.
I will.
Get the fine print.
Yeah, I will. Okay, we have just a couple more little items, so. Seven point two. Do you guys need to get up and move a minute? No? All right, you need to get up?
Yeah.
You get up?
Yeah.
Let's just get up and move. We've been sitting, and you know, my dad doesn't do that. So the, if we, if we look through all of our code of ethics that we agree to as board members, the one that came forward to me as a concern, and especially after comments that were in the paper, was um I have to find it, man. Avoid being, avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal, personal or partisan gain. And that all came about after our last meeting. And I just wanted to review this, and if there's comments people needed to say or share, this is the time when we need to just make, make that, just as a reminder that this is what we all agreed to when we became um members of the school board, is that we weren't necessarily promoting a partisan uh gain of any sort. So are there any comments or questions around that? It's that, it's the one that begins with the word avoid down at the bottom, third term at the bottom.
So I guess my question, what does that mean when you attend a political party-sponsored something or other?
Well, I, I don't know that it's, it's if you're drawing attention specifically to yourself over something that is um in disagreement with what, as, as a, as a, with us as a board, I guess, would be my take on that, but I don't know. There were just a lot of articles in the paper comments that were made. So I just wanted to just, have you revisit this, put it in your mind and remember that you're out in the public.
I mean, I think that one of the pieces of that is that we have our own, we have our own personal stuff, right, all the things. Um and so our involvement and engagement in those things as a person is different from how we're acting, representing this body, right? Um to, you mean to answer your question, right? I mean, it is nonpartisan in the work we do. And that might not, you know, we might have our own personal stuff, but
We follow our guidelines when we're at meeting or representing the board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's basically kind of where it's at. It's like kids at school. I, we, I got a letter, I don't know if everybody got it, I think Stu and I got it, from a parent in Berthoud.
Yeah.
Regarding
Yesterday.
Yeah, and you know, it's just a matter of, it's, it's, but the rule is apparently there and that's, yeah. So it's, if you follow some of those procedures. So I'm not gonna dwell on it, I just wanted to pull it forward so that it's put into everybody's mind that it was an uncomfortable position for everybody else that was being targeted by that whole thing last weekend, or last week, the meeting.
So let me, so let me speak since, so we can stop dancing around in circles here. We all know it's about a shirt that I wore, which I had no idea was gonna cause such an uproar. It was real women wrong. It was Real Women Rock, that's what it said. I wore it.
There was more to the shirt than that. What else was on the shirt?
There was the logo of the manufacturer.
Which was what?
X, 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 Y.
And so what does that mean?
That's the brand, that the company that makes it, that's what their logo is.
But what does that mean?
They, they're a company that supports women in sports. I am not responsible for how people process things. I wore it for Real Women Rock. I didn't realize that everyone was gonna fixate on the logo down at the bottom.
Well, I didn't even know the logo, what upset me was when you, at the end of the meeting, you took your sweater off and, and. He took your phone and took a picture of you and like you were standing there very proud under our school logo, our school whatever, that we, you know, right behind our board. And you were posing there and to me, and then that went out on the internet and that.
Positing a.
It was out on something, because I saw it.
So Nancy, don't try to say that you don't do this intentionally, we all know you do it intentionally.
The picture that my husband took didn't go on the internet.
It did, I saw it out there.
Well, then how did it get out?
I don't know, because none of us had our phones out.
But Nancy, what you do is intentional, so don't, please don't think that we're not.
Wear a shirt that says Real Women Rock is not partisan.
Okay, second shirt, Nancy. You are a different shirt, and you have an issue with transgender students.
Yeah.
And it's the second time you've worn a shirt that I found offensive.
I, I have an, an issue with making sure and supporting girls in sports.
But you do not, that's not your issue, you have an issue with people who are transgender. That's not your issue, what sports have you part, supported?
That's not a fair statement and I'm not here to debate with you what I believe or don't believe. I wore a shirt, I didn't realize the X, the manufacturer's logo.
Okay, all right. You think we're new? Let's go, here's where we're at, here's where we're at.
I, I think this is not productive, I didn't, my husband took a picture, I, he said he wanted one, I, he took it.
Under the Thompson School District Board of Education, like, we're not new to your.
I think, I think rather than attacking each other.
Right.
I think what I would say is what people do on their own time is their business and can do whatever they want. When we are sitting at the dais, we are representing the district. And so we need to be extra super careful, all of us, to keep our personal thoughts and feelings. To ourselves, to the degree that we can support the district. I think, you know, wearing, I think we should wear clothes that say, say nothing, honestly.
No print on our shirts.
I think if, if we can be. Complete, I mean, I, I think, I think that's my, that's my viewpoint. I think, you know, I think women do rock, I think, I think what, what caused the offense with the shirt. Was the, the real, the Real Women Rock, which is implying that there's a group of, of transgender women are not real.
I, I am not responsible for the meaning people add to those.
You're not, that's true, you're not responsible for that, but we are all responsible for, for the choices we make. And for the, you know, how we present ourselves to, to the public. And I think, I think in, particularly in this day and age where there is, as we were talking about, there's a lot of conflict. There's a lot of very varying viewpoints on both sides of this, within our district, without our district, with our community members, with our students, with our staff, et cetera. And I think it's important for all of us to raise above the fray and keep it focused on, on what's best for our students.
Then, there needs to be, it needs to go both ways. When I'm trying to speak about my opinion, then there needs to also be the same level of acceptance and respect. I mean, and oftentimes I do not get that. So, everyone, I, everyone is aware, I believe, excuse me, that. The only thing I have is that biological males should not play on girls' sports teams. That's not being anti-trans, that's just a different, that's, that's just a different perspective. And if we're gonna be a district that says, we respect diversity, we embrace inclusivity. It, it means all or not. I mean, we've had, so it doesn't mean that I have to just sit here and listen to you guys all the time and accept it, it has to go both ways.
If I could interject something, what, what struck me was that I hadn't actually noticed what was on your shirt. Until toward the end of the meeting, but during the portion of the meeting where we were supposed to give our board reports on committees. You spoke about the transgender issue and girl's sports, which was not a board report. And so then when I saw your T-shirt, I thought, oh, the T-shirt is a prop, it's a costume that goes along with the comment that you, that you made. That was the way I interpreted it, so, for whatever, whatever that's worth. But I, I go along with the comments that have been made, that our job is to. Do everything in our power to represent the students in our district, to encourage their academic achievement, their well-being, et cetera. And anything that deviates from that, at whatever point it happens in the meeting, to me as a board member, isn't appropriate.
Do you guys understand how many girls in this district and their parents don't feel like they have a voice?
About sports?
About, about their daughters having to share locker rooms and play on sports teams with other biological males.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into the bait of that tonight, but that's, that's a constituent that deserves a voice as well.
But that's not what we're referring to.
And, and actually, if I may, one, I do have an email I was looking back on, that I think you all will find interesting. So I'm gonna ask that that gets forwarded to everybody later, but in the interest of this. I do have some really specific things that I want us to do in regards to this. We have been asked, not just over this issue, this is not a one-time issue.
Okay, let me save you the trouble, you wanna censor me, do it, go for it. Do it.
Great, so what I'd like to recommend is, we have committee assignments. And if we are not representing the board when we are in our committees, and that is what this comes down to for me. Then that matters, and it would matter regardless of who this is, right? Like, if I'm not doing, if I'm not representing as well, I would expect that as well. I'm a veteran's wife and the honorary position of leading the Pledge of Allegiance, I find truly disturbing. Is done by somebody who has violated their oath of office and is violating state federal laws, constitution. Our US constitution or state constitution, our policies. I don't think that we should be honoring somebody who, who doesn't actually wanna support all. And that's not this political, that's not the political debate, there's a place for a political debate, that's not what this is. And I wanna make that very clear, the time and the place and the how matters a lot. And if, if we're not representing all students, then that is a real important issue for us as a body to decide. I have a lot of information, I will spare you from, from a lot of the details. But I wanna point out that there are, we expect a lot better behavior. And we do specifically outline like what a dress code looks like that's appropriate. We expect a lot better behavior from our students in many ways. I'm counting like upwards of ten policy violations on a regular basis, as well as multiple laws. That's a massive problem, that's not representing this role at all.
I have broken no laws and I would be cautious in saying that.
Okay, would you like me to, would you like me to list them?
I think that this is going a little too far.
I think that we're gonna draw closure on this, but I think we've made the point. And Dawn, keep track of what you need to share with us and be sure you share it out. Is there anything else that needs to be up forward?
Just not only T-shirts, but stickers that are shown on your computer. And on everybody's computer, I should say, that might, I mean. It's a school computer that you take into.
It's my computer.
It's at the dais and so what shows to the world when you're at the dais matters.
Before you guys got new computers, you all have stickers on them too, so I just put stickers on them. Ones from the police officer, ones from the rez.
Right, yours, your Thompson School District, I mean, so, I just think that those, just look at those, I would ask. Everybody, we have stickers on.
I, I guess maybe output of this is that we clearly need a lot more training.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if we don't understand what the laws are that bound us to do this job, we have some significant work to do.
Thank you. Okay, can we draw closure on it? Stu? All right, we're gonna move on to seven point three, I think it's Todd, potential bond and mill, right? Are you still back there?
I am. I'm still spot back there. Okay, moving on, our future bond and mill discussion. What we wanted is now to just provide one, an update on the overall needs. I just think that that's something that, as we talked about what we're doing, that just needs to be ahead of us. Because it is really what we need to talk about. And then discussion on next steps, so we did have some movement from our last discussion, so yeah, we'll just go over that. So, on the next slide, when you look at the overall needs, you know, this is when we talk about the why and the need for going. You know, we're at that five hundred million dollars in the next five, six years, so it's a significant need that is out there. So I think regardless, you know, the conversation, regardless of when we go, what the size is. The conversation around the need is what's out there, it needs to be focused on, because not only this need around the true capital piece of it. But then this also is the human talent side of it too, so this, this really says the capital need, but there's also a human talent piece, a mill that's behind this as well. So, just for a visual there, the next steps that we're looking at is we engaged a firm. We actually talked to a few of them that helps several districts around the state.
Also a different firm.
A different firm, yes. It really what we did is it takes like everyone to do this work, so it's not just about, you know, a few presentations or community engagement. It's really about, you know, the entire community and district attaching to a consultant firm, so we can do this all in one big piece. So we did talk to a few, we stuck with Mile High Public Affairs, they've helped, they're local here. They've helped a lot of other districts, that's really all they've done. And their purpose is to not lose, I mean, when you talk to them, that's, that's what they'll say, we, we don't lose. That doesn't mean, they go all the time, so they're very strategic on when to go and the next steps. But if they're gonna go and advise us to go, then, you know, it's, it's more of that philosophy of, they're not gonna lose.
So wait a second, I, I just have to ask this, so they're gonna target a survey and from that survey, they tell us whether, whether it's good to go?
So, there's a lot of things we can do, we've talked about communication, strategies on communicating, community forums. There's conversations about, you know, organic groups within the district. Really what they say is take a pause right now, do a target survey. So different than the survey we did before was kind of broadcast, this is truly specific to individuals. In individual age, age groups, demographics, and not attached to us. So they don't want us to push it out, they wanna say, okay, we want very specific individuals to answer this, to get the real data.
But in our community.
Of our community, yeah, so say, okay, we're gonna go, you know, fifty percent Republican, fifty percent Democrat, age this, you know, the. So all the pieces and very specific targeted survey, rather than a broadcast survey. So, their hope is to only really get four hundred pieces, results back, to then help us make a decision. So really what we're at now is let's, let's do that survey, so we're helping them put that together with different data pieces. And then we'll talk mid-April about what that looks like, which really then informs next steps. So, they're gonna help us determine, similar information from before is do we do no tax increase, the things we've talked about. Do we do something around, they said, don't do two twenty again, you've already done that, but something else. And then even larger, to understand what the, what the feeling of the community is. From there, then they say, okay, this is a good idea, not a good idea. You know, if it is to the next steps, then we have a lot of work to do. Mike and his team's already meeting with them to kind of understand different ways to do it, so it's not that work's not happening. But if it's all of a sudden a November twenty-five recommendation, the board supports it, you know, that kicks in to a lot of different pieces. We did have conversations about obviously, you know, with the superintendent, new superintendent can handle different positions. It's, you know, there's, there's different challenges, but there was also reflection in eighteen when Mark came in, you know, that we were about in this thing spot. So, it can happen. There, there's, it, it, it just creates more different opportunities, I'll say, hurdles to, to work through.
But by local, does, you mean it's just right in this area?
So it's just right in this area, so it'll be within our boundaries, I mean, just, just our boundaries, our specific families. They have data to truly pick out, okay, we need to hear from this group, this group and this group. And then there'll be options, and they'll get different surveys too, some will get different surveys, understand, you know, a hundred million like we saw before. You know, the lower amount was the one that everyone gravitated towards. So if you don't give someone that, maybe, you know, the, it provides different data points to say, okay, then, then a hundred's not it. Two fifty is it, whatever the number is, that's what we're gonna help define as the different levels that there's, that, that comfort around. So from there, and you can see on the next slide is, we have our plans to get that, we'll come back to the board, review those, those data pieces. And then talk about next steps. You know, at that point, we'll have to get to, you know, more of a decision of, you know, how much this work's moving forward. Because there's a lot of community engagement, business engagement needs to happen, fundraising, you know, all the pieces that, that goes along. That's still what have to happen, if twenty-five's the right time. If it's not, then those things still happen, it's just on a different, different timeframe, so. There's lots more around, you know, this'll be both, so I focused on bond, but there'll be mill in there as well, so they have the same information that we went before. They recommended just do one package on that, don't do different levels, the package that they, we went for before, they found appropriate. So they said, let's not break that into different options, you know, that's, that's a pretty, fair, fair value to go for, so. They were gonna survey that.
The mill.
The mill piece, yes, and then different levels on the bond.
Questions?
Have we, is this a? What, what kind of agreement are we making with this company? Like, is it just, like, are they done in May?
Yeah, no, great question, it, it depends, it's monthly, depending on what we do. So, yeah, so it could be in April, no, okay, we're gonna gauge you, we have for five months and this is what it's gonna be. It may not be that, if we change our strategy, so it's a, they, they go on a monthly basis, depending on their work too. Because obviously if it was in twenty-six, it would probably change what they're gonna do next month compared to if we were going twenty-five.
Nancy?
So, because one of my questions is, what is the cost of this consult, so is it a, because you were just saying it's monthly based on what we say we need that month. So is on a, is it on a hourly fee, is it on a, like a menu?
So it's eight thousand dollars a month, with a pretty defined list of activities. That is, a lot, I'm saying, so I think, you know, basically it's days one twenty to one eighty, expect to do this, this is what we'll do. So that's the cost that they've, they've given us.
And then, what, what fund will this eight thousand a month be paid from?
From the general fund right now.
From the general fund, with that under, what, like the elections? With that under, what, like, the elections, or?
I don't know if we've gotten to the point of national budget code, but we can work on that.
And then did I, when you were talking on uh, the survey, did I hear, did I hear you right, where you said they only expect four hundred surveys back?
Yeah, because what, um, they have all the data from last survey, so really what they do is they went through and defined, um, what worked, what didn't work. And really what they came to is, um, it was almost over surveyed, and there was too much, too many options out there. And so that's some of the data that may have, not been as accurate as what we want. So they want, they want less, less numbers, but real data, you like, one-on-one, rather than the mass numbers and just more generally data.
So how would they pick, are they gonna pick it and send it to then four hundred really specific narrow people?
Yeah. Yes, so they could do, yeah, target survey, and they have a sub-consultant, um, that does the surveying for them. That that's what they do, and it's the same surveying period consultant that did, um, the other districts around the state that were successful this last round.
So are they sending it to four hundred people, or are they expecting, sending it to more expecting four hundred responses?
They want four hundred responses, so, ish, yeah.
Any other questions? Stu?
So if they come back mid-April-ish with data that says, um, you should go for this, is it possible that we would know that by mid-April?
Yeah, because if we don't, um, yeah, because we, if that's the direction, the direction the board wants to go, there's a lot of work that's gotta be accelerated.
Absolutely. Um, so if they come back with that information, um, no one is suggesting we would have to wait until the new superintendent is in place in order to make a decision, correct? Because one of the um, complaints that I heard, and I've heard this also from my contacts in Casby, that waiting until August to start a bond and a mill campaign is too late. And if we um, get the go-ahead, I'm I'm happy to go on the record right now as saying our needs have not changed since last year. And things have probably gotten worse. The needs have probably escalated. So I'm certainly open to considering in mid-April or whenever we get this data, if they say you should go for it, I think we should consider going for it because our needs have not changed, they've probably gotten worse, and, yeah, so.
I would say the only um, awareness around that is if the board were to take action, that changes what staff can do. So um, a lot of the work that would need to happen up until, there's there's a sweet spot, August. Sometimes it's late, sometimes, it really depends on the pre-work. Because if you have enough pre-work done to where your campaign in August is just kind of already moving, you know, it it's kind of irrelevant when the board votes. The the piece that really needs to happen is that pre-work to where a campaign can kick off, and it's it's seamless, so it's almost, it's just a continue of what's the work that's happening now into that. The challenge of going too early is then, um, you know, the different campaign laws get put in place, and then the different restrictions get put in place, and it changes kind of the landscape of even some of the conversations.
Sure. And I think I probably did a little bit too much talking after I made my my real point, which was that if we decide to go, my personal opinion as a board member is that decision is not based on having a superintendent in place because the need doesn't change regardless of whether we have a superintendent or not. So I think I kind of muddied the waters by extending what what my real point was.
I'll hop off of the other things you said that I do think was important too.
Okay.
'Cause I I agree with what you said about the, it's, um, so to your point, I I have a little bit of relief knowing that, um, so much of the work that we did last year will help us do, if we are gonna move forward with this year's stuff. And we still have a lot to do. We wished we had more time to do more of it. So I think if that, if we're also getting some clarity on what we can do regardless of, like, I think we've said this before, but like, anything that we can do ahead of a vote, any meetings that we can have to share information like this that says we have these needs, whether we do it this year or next year, we have these needs, and then turning that into a conversation once it's official, like, those kinds of things. Anything we can move forward faster will help us.
Yeah, exactly. That's some of the work that Mike and his team's already doing with them to help understand that, yeah.
You good? Okay?
Yes, I am.
So we can keep Mike busy between this and that.
Hey, Mike, take this weekend off, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just some.
Thanks, Dawn. Okay, one one more thing, you guys, real quick from Bill, negotiations update, correct?
Correct. Coming by.
Ten slides, how'd that happen?
Hi, President School Board. Oh, sorry, third ones. Dr. Schaefer. Sue and I are here to kind of talk about negotiations update from our last meeting. So STRI2025, uh, human talent, investigate areas and compensation benefits, so let T S D is competitive. This presentation will connect to STRI2025, human talent, and the upcoming negotiations that's coming here next, next week, I believe.
Before break.
Yeah, so discussion items, highlights from Monday, February twenty-four negotiations. We talked about two questions, question one and then question two. And then interest-based model for negotiations and review negotiations dates and time. And I just have to give a prop to Karen Crusoe, who keeps us organized. She's true, true, truly amazing, and um, it's always fun working with her.
So the first question we talked about was critical question number one, what adjustments need to be made to the site-based shared decision-making process? Um, this was a question that came out of last year's negotiations, so there was a task force through the year to look at it. So we started as a large group, um, reviewing and adding to the story and interests from last year. Um, we also looked at a draft of the um, task force suggested Article Six, collaborative decision-making, and we tabled it till next week, March thirteenth.
Okay.
And a critical question too, what adjustments need to be made to elementary plan time? So similar, like, we decided to take two questions because there's four questions that revolves around the task force work that we did. So Sitebase was one of them, that's who we're talking about, and the second one was an elementary plan time. So this was part of negotiations last year. So the large group reviewed story and interests from twenty-four, twenty-five. So the great thing we do is we go back to the work that we did, and so reinventing the story and interests, and then kind of add to it if we have any different interests. From last year to this year, the small group, there's a small group, uh, that kind of talked about it and the the task force. So they kind of brought in what what their options were, and then from their options, uh, they talked about one day a month quarter for planning, Kell, Kellering change possibly, length length and late start, two hours, counseling, SEO specialist doing SEO lessons, special teachers full-time. So those are different, different options. Like, it'd be difficult to get deep into what the conversation was, uh, but but an option is just an option. So we use the interest base, and we go through that, and the large group created addition options. So at times when we have a sticking point, then we kind of break up and talk about different options. And options are basically like, sky's the limit. If there weren't any limitations to ideas, then what could that look like? So we're not done with that, like, we'll continue the conversation around question two. And then from there, the rest of the PowerPoint, what gives an idea, like, at the last update that we gave you, we read the critical questions, and then I had an opportunity to send you all what the finalized, uh, critical questions were. So those are the questions that we have. And then, uh, we follow interest base, uh, we're an interest-based model district. And then those are the dates coming up, so the next one is March thirteenth, we're in the pine room instead of the boardroom.
Boardroom is hard to busy.
Yeah.
That's our teams.
And those are the teams. So Sue and I, uh, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
It's the same, um, person who's done the.
Susan Sparks, Suzar Fazel, Teter.
Yes, we have her back.
For her twenty-six year, I think. It's amazing, anything about like twenty-six years.
Is there anybody? You know, one time last year, she was unable to make, due to some, an issue, and she was able to, um, recommend somebody that we contacted that had skills in the same way, so. But we were nervous, you know, hoping that she would be able to really do this.
Can I? Oh, no, go ahead.
The only question I had was, and I don't remember this being come up in previous years or before. So what is it on the grievance process? And I think it's in the critical. I read it, where they're looking at wanting the grievance process changed, or?
Well, the question is, how can we clarify the problem-solving grievance process? So basically, according to N L U, like, you can problem, problem solve any issues that come forward, like, using a process. So if a problem solving isn't resolved at the lowest level, then it could turn into a grievance, and the grievance is a violation of the contract. So it it's just clearing out what that process is, 'cause at times it's unclear of, like, okay, so there there's stages to the process, so let's say, for example, if if an executive director is involved with the problem solving, they're part of the grievance process, so at times you don't necessarily need to start with them, you need to start at another level. And then just kind of having discussions, 'cause we've had this in place for some time, and we've kind of done, done some wordsmithing with the forms. It 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 really has to do with the forms, right? And how the forms are being used and how they're being moved forward.
And when you have a new president, then they they might be interpreted differently. Anthony and Bill worked together for a lot of years and had shared interpretation, and so when the new president comes in, I say, well, I read it this way.
So is it more just to make sure that, like, all of these lower, these processes that keep moving up like this are more clear? So so it doesn't go to the grievance level when it really doesn't need to? Okay.
And to be sure, just even the process within it, that that we're all understanding. Some of the forms, um, aren't clear in where, what time, what point in time certain things should be added in. We're just trying to make sure there's clarity.
I think the forms could be a little better, like, at times it's like, okay, so like, step one, step two, step three. So then the people that are involved with it don't know where it goes next. So and and there's a timeline, so if we can do anything to adjust that, that's great, but we'll use the interest-based model to see what options are out there.
It's interesting to watch, so if ever you have half-day, or if you ever have that time where you can go in and just sit and listen to the conversation and see how they work through it. It's kind of eye-opening. And, you know, when they tabled question one and then tabled question two, I'm going, they're gonna be here all year. They've got eight days on there, and I'm going, okay, so they're gonna need a few more days. But it's always surprising to them when you get there the next time, and maybe within an hour, they've resolved that first question. It just, they needed to step away from it, and and everybody needed to step away from it.
Well, like, for example, that first question about Sitebase, like, as as a two-plus-two team, like, we thought it'd be easy question to kind of get through. But but then when we start having discussion and people start asking questions, like, just the word of what does site mean? Right? So at times you're like, well, site could be like transportation. Well, technically, it's not defined like that. Site has to do with having a principal of all, like, having an administrator, having F T assigned to it. So so that kind of gets the conversation a little deeper. So then, like, everybody has different views and they add to it. But but the one thing I appreciate is just the relationship we have coming to the table that's really focused on student achievement, and and it's about kids. And it's not so much about adults, you know, it's really about the kids that we serve in in the classroom, so.
That's very collaborative.
It is. I was, I was amazing, yeah.
On a different tack, um, I submitted three, uh, kind of, it was kind of a combination of questions and comments to Mark, which I didn't realize were going out to the board as an R F I. It is fine with me that they did. But as a result of that, did you see the two questions related to negotiations? Did you, did they ever make their way to you? A couple of suggestions or a couple of ideas, can this be considered?
Like, we sent the answers for it.
Pardon me?
I said, we sent the answers.
I I didn't get the answers.
They came out.
I wonder if that, is that the one where I said, is there some, supposed to be something on the second page, because I didn't get it?
Yeah, there was nothing on the second page, it was just one page for the Google Doc, that was it.
She sent it all the questions were answered.
When did she say?
Is it just this morning?
Maybe I didn't see it. I will look. So anyway, the important thing is you saw it and responded. That's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
That's a great question. The questions you're asking are really good. Deep, because it's deep, like, the times when you look at a contract, you get what that looks like. And had to kind of capture more time for the needs that teachers have day in and day out. Uh, like, the needs are are deep, like, needs from teachers, need from administrators, all helping kids, so. You know, that's what we enjoy about negotiations the most, it's really about a snapshot of where we're at currently and what can we do to improve our system.
Thank you. All right. We are at the end of our agenda, so I'm going to, uh, turn the meeting with my water bottle.